Hey Catherine, I'm here. I hope you can hear me, but I don't see me.
Yeah, I can hear you. I can see you.
You can see me, alright. How do I look?
Decent.
Jerry, sometimes if you go up to the top right and click View, if you change to like Gallery.
I'm on Gallery right now.
Hide Self-View, is that checked?
Yep, I just clicked something else and here I am.
There you go.
Great.
And I guess I look decent, I guess. Thank you, Catherine.
Don't be distracted by your own visual.
Usually not, every now and then.
Oh gracious. Another interesting day.
Interesting, or interesting, interesting?
No, when people add, the recording's not on, we haven't started. When people ask me about the job sometimes, now I mostly just say I'm never bored.
It's true.
It's true, never bored.
Always learning.
Always learning, that's right, that's right. More of that to come too. See, we will not have Linda with us today. She may be able to listen in, she's, but not present, so we'll just see how that goes for her, but we do have a quorum. And we're still a minute away, so.
Catherine, just out of curiosity, to conduct a work session, do we need a quorum?
You know, I don't know, Tom. I always think in terms of quorum, no matter when we meet, but possibly not, since we're not voting on something.
Decisions, yeah.
Yeah, I just know I feel the more, the better, so.
Yeah.
Anytime anyone is absent, I feel the, I feel the loss of the person being part of the conversation, so. It's just my, you know, big family upbringing. Okay. Hello, everyone. Leila, have we got everybody from a staff or support's perspective that we need today?
We do.
Great, okay. Well, I would like to call this workshop session of the Manzanitas City Council to order on June 11 at 2:00 PM. We have one rather large piece of business in front of us today, and it'll be focused on the first part of our comprehensive plan efforts. So I'd like to say just a few words, and then I'm going to turn it over to Leila. And at that point too, if any other councillor has input about the content or the agenda for this afternoon, I would welcome it, so. If I make a mistake and jump past asking you that, please pause me, and we will. So we're here, as we knew we would be, following the Planning Commission meeting, the lengthy and thorough Planning Commission meeting that was held a few days ago on Monday this week. And the Planning Commission, in essence, has approved and forwarded on to us now for our consideration, changes to our ordinances. We had a chance, some of us, to listen to that meeting, but we're gonna we've kind of, we've received a handoff now. And so we've got a recommendation from the Planning Commission. And our job now as council, the final decision makers in this, will be to, one, and we're not gonna get all this done today, so I'm just gonna lay that out there, one, make sure that each councillor thoroughly understands the changes that are being proposed, which means understanding the change, understanding the rationale for the change, and helping and trying to understand the impact of those changes over the long term. So that's what all five of us, including Linda, will be starting to get our heads around. And we've done work on this already, so it's not like beginning from scratch, but still, there's work to be done there. The second thing is, and important for probably at the end of this meeting, although I we can talk about it sooner if that's relevant, I'd like to have a discussion in Workshop today about next steps for community outreach and community discussion. And we can, and I have some thoughts about that, but I can save those just for now. Just know that that'll be on our agenda, and we'll talk about timing for that. And I'm very interested to get each councillor's perspective on what they think is necessary at this point, because part of our decision-making, in addition to understanding what's been proposed, includes our assessment of the community's feedback and feeling and thoughts about this, and that's not anything we take lightly, and so we want to make sure there's adequate time for that. I'd also say just one other thing that makes this an interesting discussion, and interesting decision-making, we have before us the full recommendation from the Planning Commission. And that includes things that are required of us, regardless of our personal opinion or the community's opinion, they're required of us by state law. There are other things that are not required of us, but are things that the Planning Commission carefully considered, thought of, and thought were worthy of proposing to us to look at and seriously consider. So those are two categories of things, and they interact with each other, which makes it even more interesting as we see how all this comes together and affects the future of housing in our community. So roughly, we will have Leila take us through, and she'll take, give us her agenda here in a minute, to talk us through what we have in front of us to consider. We will take Q and A, and then we, all along the way. And then we will discuss next steps. And I'd like to set a goal on this of no more than two hours this afternoon. We may not need that much time, but if we do have a lot of discussion, I'd just like to use that as a starting point, to say a couple hours to really get into this and then not extend it beyond that. But I'm open to kind of how the day goes with that too. So Tom, I see your hand raised.
Thank you. I just want to know procedurally, now that this has been handed off to us by the Planning Commission, is approved in a particular form, are we in a take it or leave it situation?
No.
We can.
We can amend, we can amend, we can accept, we can reject, we can modify.
Back to Planning Commission if we amend or modify? Okay.
No, in our hands now. So and Leila can, you know, if there's more interest in that, the basic thing that could happen after council makes its decision, and we've got things to do before that, but then the next thing would be if there was an appeal to it, in which case we go through the appeals process. And since it's already a council, Leila, I presume we go to, that would just go to Luba, since it is council, and then that would be the other next steps that could occur.
Well, I can double check this, but you'd be passing an ordinance, and that ordinance would be an emergency, so I don't think it can be appealed.
Hmm, okay. Okay, but, so regardless, Tom, that answers your question. So you know, we receive things from the Planning Commission occasionally. This and the time that I've been watching is one of the bigger packages of things to come from the Planning Commission. It's different than an individual project or an individual smaller change. It's quite a bit all at once, so that's why it's a bit different. Actually, quite a bit different than some of the things we've received from the Planning Commission, or or when we've surged as an appeal, when appeal has been made to the Planning Commission on a decision. Okay, does that sound all right to everybody regarding the kind of basic focus for today? Okay, so I'm gonna turn it over to Leila, and we'll get started.
Turn this meeting. You can see my screen?
We can.
Okay. Is it the full presentation, or is it the one that shows the next slide that's coming?
Oh no, we can't see any of your work. We just have white screen with the title and the date on it.
Okay, good, great, thanks. Yeah, so I'm gonna walk you through essentially what we went through with Planning Commission. And a few other things. And then Marcy is of course here to support, help, and answer questions. This is a collective effort led by Marcy, but really influenced by a number of different factors. And so, as you know, me well enough to know that I always like to start from the beginning when we get to a point like this, I think it's important, but you know, what we'll go through briefly is our, is a process update, so just to kind of, the mayor just did a good job doing that, but I'll repeat it a little bit. Talk a little bit about what your role is now. Essentially repeating the answer to Tom's question in some respects. Then we'll go through the proposed amendments, and I think I think the most effective way to do this is to kind of go through each piece. And Marcy did a really nice job kind of highlighting the things that we have to do, and then the things that we want to do. And I think it's important to, and we being the collective we, right, so. I think it would be most effective if we focus on the things that we have some discretion over. It isn't to say that you shouldn't ask questions about the things that we don't, so that we can help educate, provide additional information to you. But I think that that would be the most effective and efficient way to get through. There's a lot here. Ideally, we get through the full presentation, so I'll kind of keep an eye on time, and be taking notes about things that we may or may not need to come back to. And then I'd like to end by just talking about the adoption schedule. We proposed a schedule, which you saw at City Council last week, and you've seen iterations of this. It would be nice to get some input direction from the council on what that schedule looks like. Especially if there's some additional community engagement beyond the public hearing process, and then talk about next steps. Sound good? Yeah. So again, when we reach the end, I always like to go back, and we're not at the end end, but we certainly are starting to get a little bit closer to the finish line. And then, I think we said all along, we'll take the time it needs to get to where we need to be. But I do want to just sort of remind folks that this has been in the works for some time. We held a series of town hall meetings in 2022, and heard overwhelmingly from the community that participated in that. And there was a lot of folks that participated in that through surveys and the meetings, that housing is a concern, and having housing that is available to all folks through different stages of life was a big thing. And between that and when we started updating the comprehensive plan, the Oregon Legislature passed Senate Bill 406, which requires all cities and counties, communities within Tillamook County to comply with Oregon's middle housing rules. And so that's really the driver behind this, but it's also because this is what our community has been telling us, certainly since I've been here. Brad?
Yeah, I know the governor signed into law the House bill, but some of the things I've seen in documents and heard back from the community is a lot of it was specific for the working class for large cities. Manzanitas, obviously, in my opinion, is a large city. So is there any wiggle room there, or is this the law, and it doesn't matter if we're five people or 5,000, we have to do this?
So, and I'm having a little bit of trouble hearing you, Brad. I don't know if I'm the only one, but I'm repeat back what I think I heard, which is related to why are we using the large cities model? So that was in the legislation for Senate Bill 406, and I believe it's OAR 660 dot blah, blah, blah. So that is the, and I see Marcy's shaking her head, so I think I got that right. So we are subject to those rules for large cities, as are all the cities in Tillamook County and our neighboring communities like Neokani, Pacific City, Oceanside, and Alsalor. So it was part of the law that was passed. And so I do, you know, I want to build on that a little bit, which is to say that we are not electing to put ourselves out there more than we necessarily need to. There's some things that we've added. The Planning Commission has included that go beyond that, but I'll talk a little bit about what those differences are. But we are not subjecting ourselves to the large cities rules, because it's our choice, it's the law, and so that's why we're following that. And I do want to address a comment too, that this is not something we negotiate necessarily, so we don't have the opportunity to talk with the administrative agencies that are responsible for implementing state law, such as the Department of Land Conservation and Development. They're the ones that administer that law and ensure that we're compliant with that law, so it's not it's, there's not an opportunity to negotiate with them on the rules. The rules are set in statute and administrative rules, and that's the one of the foundational elements of how we developed this amendment package that's before you.
Clear. Can you hear me better now?
I can, so much better. Thank you. It's nice to hear.
Can I break in for just a second? So I looked at the, at a memorandum that was prepared by Lloyd Lindley on behalf of Neokani, asking for some exemptions, and also asking that if some of these rules applied to Neokani, that they receive subsidization for infrastructure improvements, because they're, one of the things that they're concerned about is whether they have adequate water. So that would suggest some ability to negotiate somewhere in the process. Is he just wrong on that?
I don't know the particulars of that, so I'm not gonna speak to it directly, but we do not have the same kind of limitations on infrastructure. So I just, I don't know the answer to that question. I'm not prepared to answer that. Um, so when this happened, we were also beginning our process of starting our comprehensive plan update, and so that was it's a very big step for our city. And when we started this process, one of the things that I highlighted from the beginning is that we would be doing a housing ordinance update that's concurrent. It's unusual to do that. Usually you go through the conplan process first, and then you make amendments to your enabling ordinances that implement the conplan later. But in this case, we did those two actions concurrently because of the state's requirement that we implement the middle housing rules by July 1. And through that process, we established the Public Advisory Steering Committee. And then specific to the housing ordinance amendments, we have held some past briefings. Primarily those occurred prior to the Community Open House, which occurred in October 2024. We received a significant amount of feedback from that, as well as a housing preference survey that was done citywide. We had a lot of respondents to that. And then we conducted specific interviews with folks in this community that have roles in housing, or own businesses, own property, and got some information out of that. And then conducted stakeholder surveys with them. We've held a number of work sessions with the Planning Commission, which ultimately led to the ordinance that is before you today. And what the result is, is this high level of local customization. And the foundation of that is really in community input and state law. And I think, I'm a visual person, so what I really think is unique about what we did is that these amendments are specific and unique to our place. So I would say that broadly speaking, the model code is more of a hatchet, and what we're trying to do is slice a tomato here. And so Manzanitas' proposed amendments have been really cultivated to reflect our unique conditions, and to reflect the character and the input that we've received from the members of the community, that it's why we took that route, is we wanted to have something that was more specific and more tailored to our specific needs. I think it's fair to say that the majority of these proposed amendments are simply refinements and improvements of the model code. We, and again, it reflects our unique context and community input, and that includes the guidance of the Planning Commission. I think a way to talk about this, as we get to law and we get to details, I think we lose touch sometimes, and I'm speaking for myself, I have to remind myself of this too, of where we started. And I do just want to really emphasize that this started with community input and state law. We sort of had to look at two, both of those things together. And that really informed this initial approach, which was our code concepts. What I didn't include here is we also did an audit of our code, to see where does our code not align with the laws that we are being required to abide by. And that really informed the basis of what you have before you today. And then we spent a lot of quality time with the Planning Commission, who are also community members, who have been appointed to that board in order to because of they have a certain level of expertise in this area, and have really dove deep into this with us over many, many months. And that feedback then informs the recommendation that is in front of you today. And so it includes all of that. And then the next step is, is that Planning Commission makes a recommendation, but as the mayor noted, the city council is the governing body and the decision maker when it comes down to enacting laws for the city. So it comes down to So it comes down to, to all of you being comfortable with what you have before you or an amended version of what you have before you, before that is finally adopted and becomes law. And the three stars there really indicate that these are all community folks. These are all people who are engaged and are part of our community who have informed the recommendation. We've been really fortunate to work with some very talented staff. Uh, our, you know, Marcy is one of the leading experts in the state, probably in the nation, in middle housing. Um, but she's really been a coach and a guide along with the input that we've received from the community, as well as the combination of that with state law. And then for better or for worse, it's also my background. And so it's a little unusual to have that kind of skill set managing this project in a city or a size. And so um, I've been deeply involved in, in this uh, development as well to ensure that again, the community input is really the driving factor and that is balanced with the state law. And so I think what that gives us is something that's a very um, meaningful and tangible reflection of the values that we have in this community and what we want to see have happen. And so I'm very proud of that work and I'm very proud of what we have proposed. It doesn't mean that we won't be proud of it if it changes. In fact, I expect that in some instances it may. Um, but we've worked very hard to ensure that what you have today is really a genuine reflection of our community. So, you know, where we are now is the Planning Commission has now approved these proposed amendment. And so these are adoption ready amendments and they are recommending that you adopt that. Um, but you need to talk about these things. And so your job now really is to discuss and to deliberate these proposed amendments. And if you decide to make changes, you need to specifically direct staff on what those changes are. If you need more information, we will give that to you. So this becomes the uh, starting point for you, although we have been working with you along the way. So this isn't the first time that you have seen it. I have spoken with all of you independently. Um, I know you've all worked very hard to get a high level of understanding of where things are. But you may direct staff to do something different. And so we're here to listen and to uh, support you in that decision making process. And so before I jump specifically into the amendments, does anyone have any questions or comments or things they'd like to address before we, we dive in? Yes?
I have one comment about community input. So, because I can picture people listening and thinking, well, I think, I think that is great, but I never in the world suggested and actually gave comment to the, to the contrary, to some of the things that are being proposed now. So I think, you know, part of what's in, really interesting about this process from gathering a lot of people's input in the community is the Planning Commission, um, with the help of staff and the folks we've hired to help us with this and the, and now the council have got a lot of filtering to do because I might have somebody in the community who's absolutely passionate about ADUs, absolutely passionate. We got to have them, you know, that, that's going to really make a change for the better and it'll be a big change. And with the ADUs comes up, updates potentially about parking, which have not been part of that person's thinking and is very much on the mind of other people. So this whole thing is just a big balancing act of when you want something, other things come with it. You know, there, it's not exactly consequences, but it's things that come with it that weren't necessarily on the mind of the person who suggested it. Um, and so there's, that's just why we really want to take our time and make sure we do really understand this and then uh, have another round of discussion and input from the, from the community. So, yeah, because there's a lot of, there's just a lot of knock on effects from these things and we want to make sure we've really thought about it carefully. So.
That's a great point. And Brad, I'll get you a second, but one of the things I didn't note, I think is important to note, is that every property owner in the city and urban growth boundary received notice. And then I also included in everybody's water bills, sort of a frequently asked questions or sort of a summary of what is happening here. And we did get a lot of folks reaching out to the city for additional information and we responded to all of that. But there's a pretty wide uh, net that we cast. And then the process is set up, so the public has an opportunity to participate in hearings. So we had a handful of folks participate and provide testimony at the Planning Commission hearing, in addition to written testimony as well. And so when you initiate your first public hearing, that will also be an opportunity for folks to weigh in, in addition to any other outreach you decide to do. Uh, so the system is set up to allow for folks to bring forward their concerns, comments, questions, accolades maybe, um, about what, what we have done, um, and what is being proposed. And so I think it's uh, this is, you know, sending something out citywide is, you know, the, really the the most thorough way that we can actually um, reach people. And so, um, yeah. Brad, did you have a comment?
Uh, I did. Uh, I just, if we're going to cover this later, you can stop me, but let's talk about the adoption date. Um, I saw in some of the memos, um, a must adopt by June. I know the state model code will be implemented July 1st, not our decision. But as far as the amendments and the things that are the want to haves versus the must haves according to the state law, we're not restricted to a specific timeline to put that in place. Is that correct?
That's right. Yeah. So we won't hit that June 30th deadline at all. So the model code goes into effect July 1 and then staff will have to start reviewing applications using that model code um, until such time that the city passes its own ordinance.
Do you see a significant risk from the state code versus Manzanita's specific amendments like some uh, not so specific language that could certainly leave one up to their own or the city's interpretation of how to implement that?
Yeah, I don't, um, you know, it's hard because I don't have a crystal ball. So I, I think it'd be overstating it to say there's this huge risk or significant risk. So I, I would say, I think I could say pretty clearly that no. But there may be some unintended consequences that occur because of that. Massing, sizing, things of that nature, um, would likely be uh, di- will, are very, are different than what our amendments have um, include, which are much more context sensitive to the development that currently exists here. In fact, it's more refined than what our existing code has in place um, to protect against that. So I don't want to overstate it, but yeah, you know, if we get an application for townhomes or for cottage clusters or something of that nature, um, it will, it's potentially going to look different than what it would look like if our amendments have been adopted by June 30th.
One last question. If uh, well, obviously the state model code is going into effect Ju- uh, July 1st, more or less. If someone submitted plans for a permit on July 1st and council adopted the Manzanita specific code, let's say in August, that July 1st permit, even though it's in process, would still follow the state model code, not the Manzanita specific amendments?
That's correct. Yes. The uh, rules that we use are applied on the date that the application is submitted.
Got you. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Uh, Tom?
Thank you. Um, so looking at Marcy's occasionally asked questions that came out today, there's also um, a note about um, the, a grant deadline as being another date that we need to observe. Um, I don't know that I know what that grant is and, and paying for, and when is that deadline?
Yeah. So that's the Department of Land Conservation Development Housing Grant that we received for $75,000 and that deadline is Friday. However, uh, Planning Commission has approved and what we, what we, our scope of work that we submitted for and the funding that we requested got us to adoption ready language. So technically, what you have before you is adoption ready. It may be you choose to change it before you adopt it, but we have hit that deadline and in fact, we're submitting our uh, final paperwork tomorrow in order to um, receive those funds. Um, so it was very important to us and one of the reasons why we needed to get to um, consensus around those, those ordinance amendments and the timeframe that we had. And because of state law. Ideally, we could have done that sooner, but I think we needed to take the time that we needed to take and that's why we are here today. And I have no regrets. It was a good move. Okay, ready to dive in? Now I will go one at a time. Um, and we're just going to go section by section. So I know all of you have, uh, I'm smiling, but actually it goes true. You have read all the ordinance amendments. And so if we need to flip into any of the details, we can do that. But I do think at this stage, uh, having, this is pretty detailed as it is, but again, staff is here to answer any questions you might have, uh, that detailed or not. Um, so what we've done is, uh, Marcy did a really nice job when this went to Planning Commission of highlighting kind of key things that have changed. Um, you all are very familiar with how an ordinance looks like when we make amendments. Uh, there's underlined and strike through language. And so that is how the uh, amendments have been written. Uh, Jerry, ready one?
Yeah, I just want to make sure before we launch into the um, the specific amendments that we have a game plan for today, because I think if we just go down the list, uh, there's already been a lot of questions from the council before we even got to this point. So if we go down the list, we could end up, you know, a third of the way through by four o'clock, maybe two thirds of the way through by four o'clock. I'm just wondering if there's a, if there's a way to sort of prepare uh, now, before we get into the merits, prepare for what we hope to accomplish. Um, instead of just going on a, let's see how far down the list we can get.
Yeah, yeah. Can I make a suggestion? So as I said in the beginning, we will make time, regardless of where we are in this, we'll have to stop and we'll have time for planning forward. So it's 2:30 now, we're not going to rush anything. So what I would suggest is let's spend the next hour, let's go through the, the walkthrough, talk through with questions, as many as you've got, for as long as we need to. And we'll see where we are in an hour. That'll put us at 3:30 and that should leave us about a half an hour to discuss planning forward. And we'll get a gauge of how much time we may need with the rest of the material if we don't get through it today. Does that sound okay to you, Jerry? Or do you want to stop?
Well, uh, the reason I asked the question and, and I, you know, I may, I may be different than my colleagues, but uh, there are a lot of things on the list that I have no problems with, no questions about. Uh, there are a few things that I have big questions about. So if, and it may not be true, but if uh, everybody on council was particularly concerned about a shorter list than the whole laundry list, maybe we could, you know, figure that out and, and then plan accordingly. Um, I don't mind going through the whole list. Um,
Yeah, I would actually, I would actually encourage us to go through the whole list. This is, this is another time to see how it all fits together. And I don't want to, I just don't want to jump. Um, and so I, yeah, I, I'd, I'd strongly prefer we do it that way. I think what you say is true, but it's also possible counselors have got different views on that. And some want to go through it thoroughly, uh, to again, today. And, and we have people listening who may be listening to this later who will need that too. That's, so yeah, are you, are you, can you, can you live with that?
Yeah, I can live with that. I think uh, one lesson I would take from uh, the couple of Planning Commission uh, meetings I looked at is, you know, they had, they had the benefit of uh, pretty, a, a lot of meetings, obviously. And a lot of these topics obviously are interrelated, but uh, if we're going to go through the list, I think we should adhere to uh, let's talk about item one before we talk about item three. Sometimes the items sort of
Yeah.
lied with each other. And I think that's where some of the uh, confusion uh, comes up.
Okay. Well, let's keep an eye on that. Anybody, anybody participating can say, hang on a second. I also know, you know, meetings sometimes can go into the higher principles of what we're trying to do. And that's not actually what we're doing today. We're actually reviewing the code. So um, yeah, so let's keep an eye on that. Leila can facilitate it, but any of us can help with that too, if we're, if we're uh, hopping around when we should go linear, if that makes sense. Hmm?
Sure.
Okay. And I'll, I will watch the time carefully because I don't, I don't want to be scrambling at the end. We need to be thoughtful about that part as well. Okay.
You know, one strategy, and I'm sorry I wasn't clear about this, that would work, that kind of gets at both of what you're saying is, is that if we land on a topic that seems like it's got a little bit of heft there, we can note that and move to the next item and then come back to it and have a more thoughtful conversation about that or get additional questions from folks. But let's see how we, we feel, but it'd be nice to be able to get through the list today if we can, identify if we need to go deeper on certain items, specifically what those are, because then we can serve you better by being able to uh, do additional work and research on that or come back to you with more information. So that, that would be my goal is to try to get through the, the full list. And if there are places that we need to spend a little more time, um, and you need more information, we can do that. So. Um, okay. So the definitions hopefully isn't super controversial, but you know, they can be. Uh, one of the things that we're required to do is listen to find all housing types. And so we have done that in the code. Um, listen to find new features that are integrated into the required housing types. So common courtyard is an example for the cottage clusters where that is applicable. And then other language that uh, conforms to the state landlord tenant law and manufactured home terminology. So these are things that are carried over from the state's model code. And then the last kind of have to do is just redefining dwelling to multi-unit. So from three units to five or more, uh, to distinguish from middle housing, which is up to four units. And so just some technical changes there. We made some amendments that are not required, but are certainly important. And um, so one of them is defining how building height is measured. You'd be surprised how often that comes up. And so especially when you're dealing with buildings that may be a little higher um, than we have seen in the past. Um, we defined a building story. So this came up when we recently had an appeal and a recently approved land use application. So to give some more clarity and certainty around that, uh, we added the definition of a side yard height plane, which uh, that applies to the shape of the building along the side yard. And so that's, I just defined it as this. The angle of how something is shaped in order to um, because that becomes part of some of our more specialized uh, requirements that are in our code. We'll see those in the, in Marcy's Jell-O molds, uh, those side yard height planes are illustrated there. And then the renaming of dwelling multifamily to dwelling uh, multi-unit. And so we're moving away from the use of family and more looking less at who lives in a space and more at what that space is. And it is a, it is a dwelling unit. And then finally, we listed and defined um, the want to do housing types that were above and beyond what is required uh, from the uh, middle housing rules. Tom?
This, I don't know if it's a typographical matter or not, but on page 72, under uh, four for sign requirements, the term multifamily dwellings is used in subsection A.
Yeah. Thank you. And it's, I wouldn't say it's a typo, but we are, so one of the things we'll do, and I'll get at that uh, towards the end, or I think it was in the memo, which I will post. Uh, that went out to city council pretty much right before the meeting. And so for folks that are out there watching, wondering what we're talking about, that will be, that will be posted. It just expands on some questions. Um, we will go back through and basically do and make sure that those are not policy related, but they're just, we're just going to go make sure everything's cleaned up once we get through kind of the meat and potatoes of the uh, the ordinance. So that will get cleaned up as part of it. We'll do a find and replace for all those items. But I love your attention to detail, Tom. You have a keeping us honest. Okay. Um, so any, any concerns, questions, thoughts on definitions? So any, any concerns, questions, thoughts on definitions? And you can always follow up with staff later too, if something comes to mind, but.
Well, for me, it's not the definitions, it's, I know my, I'm having a hard time understanding not being on the Planning Commission or an architect, the, some of the, some of the distinctions about what it actually means with, for example, the side yard height plane. So I just presume as we get deeper into this, we will spend some time because it actually goes, some of this may go, some of the questions I have will probably be in addition to just ordinance changes, just to make sure I understand what the concept is, because not all of that is clear to me yet.
Yeah, and I don't know, Marcy, that's a, that seems like a pretty straightforward thing that you might be able to describe more elegantly than I can. So can I ask you to, to weigh in on that particular item? And then as they come up, Mary, we can always address others.
And I can wait. I don't need it right now. We'll get to it when we go through, I think, a little deeper, right? It'll come back up.
I'm happy to explain it when we get into it and we can look at, or now, whatever. But I think it might make sense to explain it when we can see an image of it.
Yeah, we get to the, I put your Jell-O molds images in here and I'll have Marcy spend some time on that. So, okay. All right. Thank you. That's helpful. Okay. Moving on to the next. So just to kind of remind folks that the have to do housing types that we're required to ensure are allowed in our city are accessory dwelling units, duplexes, townhomes or row homes, triplexes, which are three units that are attached or detached, quadplexes, which are four units that are attached or detached, and then cottage clusters, which are currently defined as detached. But I believe if House Bill 3128 passes, that cottage clusters can also be attached.
2138, yes.
2138. Yeah. And so we've been tracking that as well. That came up actually in the Planning Commission hearing. So some of the definitions that we've put in place here reflect those, but they're also, was the direction we were going anyway. Brad?
Yeah, just some clarification for me. A townhouse or a row house could be two units attached, three units attached, et cetera. What's the difference between that and let's say a triplex that would be three attached units?
That's a good question.
The same to me.
Yeah, a triplex can be detached.
So three separate units. The same with duplexes and quadruplexes. So a townhouse is physically attached to each other.
Correct.
And if I could add, a townhouse is, has to be on its own lot.
Yes. Yeah, thank you for, that's a very good, salient point.
A duplex or a triplex could look a lot like two or three townhouses, but they would be on, on one single lot. But a town-
And not, and not attached to each other.
They could be, they could be attached to each other, but they could also be detached. There's a lot of flexibility built into a duplex. But say if you were looking from the street and you saw two houses attached to each other, it might be a row house if it's on its own lot, but it might be a duplex on it, on sharing the lot.
That seems a little fuzzy to me.
I think-
If someone, someone could say, I want a duplex, but I'm going to attach them and have two houses attached together on one lot. And then somebody says, I'm going to have a townhouse, which is two units attached to each other, but they each have to have their own lot. That seems conflicting to me.
They have very separate rules from each other though.
And they promote a different type of ownership structure. So a townhouse on its own lot is fee simple, right? So it can be sold separately. A duplex cannot. You might be able to condoize it, but then that gets into all kinds of building code complexities. And that's, we should just table that whole thing, but it becomes much more, it's very difficult. It's possible, and I think the state is working on making it easier. But then it would still be sold only as the building and the underlying land would be not included in that, whereas a townhome, it's sold, it's attached, but it's, it's a fee simple and it can be sold separately. And so it, you know, it can promote a different tenure type, right? They can be rented, but then they can also be sold. Does that help clarify things a little bit?
Clear. Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Leila, could you take a moment and define fee simple and what that means, please?
Yeah, so that means that it is, it's on its own lot and the building and the land can be sold as a unit and separately. So it has its own deed, has its own title, it's a completely separate piece of real estate. Whereas something that is joined together on the same lot is, is different in that way.
Okay.
It's just simple, right? I mean, it's not, but. So the want to do housing types, one of the, one of the types that were put forward is a courtyard apartment. And so those are typically characterized by usually, you know, there's a few units that are attached to each other and organized around a courtyard. And as I mentioned, if that state law passes, the definition of a cottage cluster will be essentially the same as a courtyard. But it's not what's in place yet. And so that was one of the things that the Planning Commission recommended. It was a housing type, then we took it out to the community, was placed in a number of areas throughout the community, but is included here. So it's very similar to a cottage cluster, but they're all attached. The other were small apartment buildings. Jerry? You're muted, Jerry.
Just want to confirm that anything on the want to do list would be for, for units or less?
I'm sorry?
Like a courtyard apartment, the courtyard apartments, for example, on the want to do list, those would be courtyard apartments with four apartments or less, right?
Is that right, Marcy, or could it be more depending on the lot size?
The courtyard apartments are subject to the same rules that cottage clusters are, and there's a minimum of five and a maximum of 12, I believe. So they, you could have a five unit, a courtyard apartment or a 12 unit, somewhere in between those two. On the small apartment building, that's five or more. And it has to meet the building envelope standard. It would have to fit within the height and the setbacks and everything, just the same way that any of these other housing types have to.
So how does that square with the definition of middle housing? Didn't we say earlier that middle housing is four units or?
No, the mid, middle housing refers to housing that's somewhere between a large apartment building and a single dwelling detached house.
Okay.
And I think outside of cottage clusters, Jerry, everything else is, and maybe townhomes, but it's four units or less. Is that maybe where that's coming from, that's required? But if you think of that spectrum of housing, you look at the little house and then the big apartment building, even medium sized apartment building, middle housing is everything in between.
Well, all right. So it just has another way, I guess. Under the have to do housing types on the screen, we've got six different possibilities. Under any of those six, would you have more than four units?
I think the way that the current amendments are written, only cottage clusters would be more than four.
Yes, that's correct.
Tom?
I hear a lot of confusion in the community about the Manzanita Pines development and then asking me about middle housing. And so I don't think there's, there's a lot of clarity in it. As I look at your definitions section, I don't see a definition of middle housing. Would it be helpful to put that in?
Marcy, do you have any thoughts on that?
I think so. Yeah, I think, yeah, maybe we just didn't put that in, but there's a, a definition from the state about middle housing. And it's really just a list of duplexes, townhouses, triplexes, quadplexes and cottage clusters. Technically, ADUs are not considered a middle housing type, but it's on this list because it is something that you have to do to comply with state law. So we, I guess the short answer is yes, we can include a definition of middle housing.
The other two housing types that were included are small scale mixed use buildings and cottages that are on detached, that are detached and on their own lots. And so the difference between those and townhomes is that they would be, they would not share a common wall. Okay, move on. Okay, section two. So these are the classifications of zones and the location of zones. One of the things, the thing we were required to do is incorporate new maps. The things that we added were a table that represents the land use and development standards. It's actually a very user friendly tool. As staff, we have to answer a lot of questions from folks that are interested in development. It's nice to be able to have a table that kind of summarizes key elements that are throughout the code. And then we are recommending consolidation of five residential zones into three. Tom?
Thank you. And Marcy, thank you for modifying the maps for the purposes of Monday night's meeting with the Planning Commission. I would really love to see a single map of the city that has MH1, MH2, MH3 in separate color codes as well, as well as the commercial district. Because this is an area where I'm really having a hard time wrapping my mind around what's permitted in any given location. So if that can be accomplished, I would be eternally grateful.
100% would be happy to do that. I see Scott nodding his head too. We're actually going to create GIS files for this too. But yeah, happy to do that, Tom. And it was a great suggestion on your part to do this. So just to remind folks that middle housing one is basically a reclassification of R2. Middle housing two includes R3, R4, the RMD and R2 zones east of Classic Street. Sorry, the, our MH1 is west of Classic Street. And so those are the zones as they're consolidated. And then finally, middle housing three is essentially the seasonal recreational zone that becomes middle housing three. So it includes underlying uses that are currently permitted where the other zones are strictly residential. Any thoughts or concerns or questions about the recommended zone consolidation? I got through a couple of meetings with Marcy about why those zones were consolidated the way they were. A lot, a lot of that had to do with the, the urban form that exists.
This may be something we can show for later unless it's a simple answer, but the consolidation of those zones, does that have an impact on how we've set up our proposal for the short term rentals and what's allowed where?
Yeah, it, it does in a moderate sense, and I plan to get a little bit more input on that from the city attorney. But the consolidation of the R4 into MH2 currently, and so we're sort of handling two different things right now at the same time, which is we'll be starting the process of implementing council's recommendation to include the R4 in the capped zones. And then it would be only the commercial zones that would be not included in those capped zones. So the consolidation of those zones effectively eliminates the R4. I still have an outstanding question to the city attorney about that in terms of, you know, we're sort of in this limbo period right now. And so I'll be sorting through that and I'll keep you advised on what, what we understand that to be. I'll certainly have an answer by the time that you are adopting this, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's a great question. And it's actually, I got a question from someone in the community about that. They live in the R4.
Yeah, and we've had feedback from people in the R4 area about, never mind, we'll, we'll come back to it.
Yeah, and that ties into the larger questions that we, I'm, it's next on my list to start working with the city attorney on addressing the recommendation from council on the new policy for short term rentals and to get you guys some information on the legal issues, if there are any around that. So that will help a lot.
Yeah, thanks, Leila.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. So the next thing is use zones. And so the things again highlighted here that are required, we have to list all the housing types in land use tables. We have to ensure that the development standards, it's pretty obvious, but it's important, require, that are required, include the desired housing types. And then we have to ensure that multi-unit dwellings are subject to the same force, form based development standards as other housing types. The things that we don't, aren't required to do are again, the want to do's. So including those specifically in the land use tables. And then I think ensure development standards permit those want to do housing types. Brad?
This has to do with the design standards, but I think it also applies to the maximum house size. I'm wondering if you have an existing structure and you decide you want to permit to do something. I know typically when permitting comes on site, they need to make sure that everything is within code before you'd be issued a permit. What if my balcony is not within the new design standard and I want a permit? Am I going to have to tear that out and fix it before I can get a permit?
I can help answer that. In the design standards section, which is, it's the new section called supplemental standards 4.160. And in the packet that was given to Planning Commission, I think it's attachment C, it's at the very end. It has a, a lot of language in the very beginning of it that talks about how these apply to buildings that are built or buildings that are being remodeled. Like at what point, what is the threshold? The amount of improvements in square footage or square footage on the facade that put you into the requirement to meet new standards and to, and then where. So for example, if you have a, an existing house and you're adding on a small portion, it would not be subject to, there's even an exemption for amounts of square footage that are under a certain amount. So that, that's all spilt out there.
So I, I know we haven't talked about size yet, but just to throw it in while we're on this topic, let's say someone has a 4,500 square foot home, one structure, which would not be allowed in the proposed amendments. What if a disaster happened, the house burned down, there was a tornado? Can they build that same footprint back or would they be required to amend to the new housing size?
I think Scott's ready to-
I can take that one. Yeah, yes, they would be able to build back. And there's, there's, there's some flexibility, you know, as, as planning staff, when we review permits, it's called continuation of a non-conforming use, if you want the planner language. So basically there, they would be non, some of those homes would be non-conforming, but they would be allowed to continue as a non-conforming use and get permits for things for, you know, disaster relief, particularly in a fire or flood or something like that. So they would be able to rebuild.
So that's what I would refer to as their grandfathered in. Would that be a similar layman's term?
Similar, yep.
Thank you.
We're going to make you a nerdy planner in no time, Brad. You'll be like, this is non-conforming use. Okay.
I'll do my best. I'll do my best.
All right, I'm going to go.
Wait, wait, wait. So as long as we were talking about attachment C, it looks like it's changed significantly since the last iteration that we looked at.
Um. Yeah.
Now you have a um, 4.160 that's named middle housing supplemental provisions. Um, and it's got additional language that we hadn't seen before. And then subsection two is standards, uh, which the previous iteration went straight to design standards as a 161. Can you tell me how and why that changed?
And for those of us who aren't really clicking in on what those numbers mean, could you just give us some context for Tom's question, please?
Yeah, the um, attachment C, there were things added to it, it's true. They, and if I could just give you an overall orientation to why we have this section and what it is about. Um, there are required to be certain minimum standards for middle housing types. And they have to do with where, uh, for example, the entrance, an entrance must be visible from the street. Uh, garages, um, especially for townhouses have to be, there has to be a minimum spacing between them so that you can actually have a parked car um, on the street or, or planting. Um, those got, and those are incorporated into your code in this new location. This is the, seemed to me to be the most logical location is at the very end of your code. Um, or in it, this section called supplemental standards. And in this section, we have um, the required design standards. And following those, so the required design standards apply to all housing types from a single dwelling to uh, up to the cottage cluster and everything in between. And it has to be applied in a clear and objective manner, which means it actually takes a little more language to explain that, and it can't go through a design review process. Following those design standards are two sets, two additional subsections that are cottage cluster specific standards and townhouse specific standards. And I believe that that, I hope that explains why there's a 4.161 applicability. That includes the applicability and the design standards. And if you scroll through that, you get to uh, 4.163 is cottage cluster and courtyard apartment design and development standards. And if you scroll through that, you get to 4.164 townhouse design and development standards.
Okay.
So for someone listening who doesn't have the document in front of them and they have not necessarily read that detail, can you give a reference number to the document that you used and the page number that the person would go to to see for themselves what we've just been talking about?
Sure.
So for example, would this, would this apply to the June 11 document that we had for the council work session? Is this the document from the planning commission and how would somebody find that?
Yeah, they're both the same, so yes, yeah.
And the person would find that by doing what?
It's in the June 11 packet and it's attachment C and there's 27 pages to it.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, um, I want to make sure, this is uh, there's a 250602 PM cover memo and attachments. It's a single PDF. And I'm a little concerned if people are seeing separate attachments, that it's not the most recent single.
It is, um, I just can't pull it up while I'm sharing my screen, but.
In our, in our council packet, that memo you described in attachment C start on page 141.
Exactly, exactly. Actually, I have a, yes, you're right, because you have an additional page, page 141. And the total number of pages in that packet is uh, 166, seven, sorry, 167.
That's great.
Speaking of pagination, as long as we're on the topic, um, I have in my iteration of uh, 95 dash four zoning ordinance, it would appear that I've got a document that's got 115 pages, but then it goes on to pages 1, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 22. Just so you know.
Thank you. I'm not sure I understand what your, what your question is.
It's not a question. It's, it's saying that if you have a document that says that it's got 115 pages to it and in fact, it's got 122, um, I, I, I'm not sure if that doesn't create a problem for um, those last seven pages.
And where, does it say it has 115 pages in it?
Uh, at the bottom of the um, ordinance, it says uh, it gives page one or two or 115 of 115 pages. But then you go to 116 through 122.
It's your, it's your page, page counter. It says page 122 of 115. It should say 122 of 122.
Of 122.
I, I, I see what you're saying. Thanks for that. This was a um, Word version of your code, which is online. It was uh, made into a Word version so we could do track change edits on it. And that may have happened in the process of it being created into a Microsoft Word document.
Just trying to help.
I appreciate that. Every little detail, really appreciate.
For sure. Okay, all right, um. So now we start getting into the, the deep end of this. Um, the use zones, these are the development standards and the form-based standards. And just to kind of remind folks what a form-based, what we were talking about when we say form-based is that the standards are designed such that the focus is on the shape and massing. Massing is kind of the bulk of the building and how that building is shaped. And kind of remains neutral to some extent about what's inside. So we're trying to regulate how a building looks um, and how it functions in terms of its outwardly appearance. And so that's all that form-based means. Um, and we can probably, probably dive into this one a little bit more, but the, one of the things that we have to do is have a minimum lot size for townhomes. Um, and that memorandum we sent out earlier, I dove a little deeper into that. The things that are not required um, are permitting a smaller minimum lot size for other types of housing. So for a small cottage, for example, um, through the PUD process, the planning commission just approved the Third Street um, flat design, which included lots that were less than 1,300 or 1,250 square feet. And so those can be sold separately. Uh, the other thing that has been recommended is uh, reducing the front, front yard setback. That, for example, helps contribute to allowing for more parking to be in the back side of the building and reduces the um, the impact on to the rear facing neighbors. And so that was one of the intentions of moving up the building to the uh, street. And you know, my, my training as a planner, just a little editorial here, is that there is uh, you know, positive community benefit to having um, front porches and front parts of buildings closer to the street and engenders a lot more interaction and um, so forth between neighbors. Uh, we introduced a side yard height plane in the rear portion of the lot. So again, to reduce the bulk and mass at the rear side of the lot, which will be a budding people's backyards. Um, we established a floor area ratio for residential uses. So I think you guys are all pretty familiar with it, but the floor area ratio is the, basically it's a ratio of developed to undeveloped land. Um, it's both horizontal and vertical, right? So simple math would be if you had a thousand square foot lot, you can only build 650 square feet of building. And that could be a two-story building that's 325 square feet per floor or a 650 square foot building that's one floor. Uh, there's also a proposal in here to establish a maximum cap on the square footage for the first dwelling of 3,000 square feet um, up to the maximum floor area ratio of the lot. And one of the things that came up in the discussion that required some clarification at planning commission is are garages included in that? And where we landed was um, that the garages are not included in that 3,000 square feet, but they are included in the overall floor area ratio. So that again, we're controlling bulk and mass. Um, there was some discussion initially with the planning commission about raising the minimum max, I'm sorry, the current height limits, the maximum height, which is currently 28.5 feet. Um, through multiple discussions with planning commission, um, we went back to the existing height limitation. One of the reasoning behind that is, is that state law requires that an additional story or another 10, another 20, it's 20% or an additional story as allowed by right for affordable housing. And so the concern about raising the height limit would be that then that would be also an additional increase. So I think the uh, height limit that folks were toying with was 35 feet. So that would have meant the building could essentially go up to 45 feet. And so in this sense, we are um, maintaining kind of the current height limit. And so if a project comes in that is eligible for that increase, um, it won't be any larger necessarily than what has already been approved. And then we maintain the current rear yard setback of five feet. I think Brad, you were first, and then Tom.
Um, with this uh, maximum square foot, if we're including in the garage space, does it matter if the garage is attached or part of the house or a separate structure not attached to the house?
No, all of the um, the buildings would count towards the floor area ratio. So it doesn't matter if they're attached or not.
But for the first dwelling unit, you would get 3,000, so conceptually you could have a 3,000 foot garage as well.
It's not a dwelling. My garage is not a dwelling, yeah.
So that's not included in the 3,000 square feet?
Right, so you could build a 3,000 square foot home and a garage.
And.
As long as you don't have a 4.65 FAR.
So a, is there a possibility for a dwelling unit to be larger than 3,000 square feet based on the lot size?
Yes, if it is the second dwelling. So this limitation applies only to the first dwelling.
So if I have, if I own a block, then let's say it's 200 by 200, the biggest first unit I can build is 3,000 square feet, even though I own four lots as one tax lot?
Yes.
I think that needs some more discussion to put.
I think we'll have a number of things flagged, so you can start with that one. We'll flag it. There's a few things on this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely, okay.
And one more, the minimum lot size of 1250, as I was reading through all the memos and documents, it looked to me like that was specific to townhouses. So our want to do would be to allow that for other housing types. So a single family dwelling, a cottage could be built on a 1,250 square foot lot.
And I'm just going to take the liberty of flagging that too.
Yeah, thank you.
I've been holding back.
Sure, because I think what I saw was the difference between what uh, is being proposed versus the OAR is if we didn't adopt this, the OAR would allow 1742, I think.
That's right, yeah.
And that is, that 1742 is mandated, correct?
Yeah, it's one or the other, and I'm sure Marcy can explain that a little better than I can, but it's either that.
So well, if people are objecting to minimum lot size and they said 1250 is too small, the biggest or the smallest, however you want to look at it, would be 1742. So not a tremendous difference.
Applied to townhouses. And if I could just take a minute to um, articulate what's in your occasionally asked questions memo that went out. And I know there are people on, maybe watching who haven't been able to see that yet, but I explained that the minimum lot size is not explicitly required, but it comes from the establishment of a maximum density for townhouses. And you have a number of choices there. You, you can be silent on maximum townhouse density, but I don't think that's a wise choice. But if you do establish a maximum townhouse density, it naturally leads to um, minimum lot size. And your two choices are to calculate it according to the model code or the OAR. And as you said, Tom, the OAR is slightly higher at 17 plus, um, and the model code calculates it at 1,250.
In the OAQ, you're talking about the section where you describe 2,500 square foot would be two townhouses, 25 to 5,000 would be three, etc.
Yes.
Thank you.
I think Tom is next, and then Jerry.
Okay, so I'm glad we're going to uh, flag this about the thinking behind uh, the maximum 3,000, because we received a letter yesterday complaining about it and you know, it resonated with me, so I'm going to be interested to hear. Um, the other question I had um, was I thought in one of the previous iterations, the um, that specifically reducing the front setback to 10 feet was related only to front porches and I wouldn't be able to build a house without a front porch that was only setback 10 feet. Is, is that specific to that or, or no?
I, I didn't understand the question. Could you try?
Well, in the, in the slide we're looking at right now, the third bullet point is reduce front setback to 10 feet. And Leila talked about, you know, that it's uh, encourages to have front porches where people will be able to sit and you get more sense of a community by, by doing that. But what I'm asking is can I build a house that doesn't have a front porch that is only setback 10 feet?
Yes.
Okay.
And you may be remembering, Tom, that in, in an earlier version, there were a couple of choices that the planning commission discussed. One was 10 feet, um, change the front setback to 10 feet, but only for porches.
Yeah.
Um, so your house would still sit at the 20-foot lot line, but your porch would encroach into the setback. But the plan, and the other choice that was presented was just simply reduce the setback to 10 feet for, for any portion of the house. And that's the one that they selected.
Could you remind us of what the current setback is for the front, please?
20 feet, yes.
Okay.
So we're going to flag this one too.
Yeah, because I want another reasoning for that if we're not going to.
Well, and the other, the other assumption about encouraging parking in the back just isn't a practical thing for so many of the the lots in our town. Like, it just doesn't, it doesn't work, so we can come back. Not, that's the whole point of flagging it, so we can come back. Sorry, Jerry, didn't mean to jump ahead of you there.
That's okay. Uh, Tom, are you done? Yeah, okay. So I'm just planting the same flag uh, on the 3,000 square foot thing. Uh, on the um, on the permitting a smaller minimum lot size 1250 for other. on the permitting a smaller minimum lot size twelve fifty for other housing types. I wanna make sure, the only other housing type I've heard about or read about in all of this is a small cottage, a standalone cottage. Uh, are people thinking about other housing types that could fit on twelve fifty?
It's possible that someone could build something that's not a cottage, it's a little bit larger than a cottage. Or it's possible that somebody could build a duplex and divide it, but that requires, um, housing, a middle housing land division, which is a subject for ninety-five-five for the land.
And if we didn't like those possibilities, we could just avoid them by saying that twelve fifty is only for townhouses.
Yes, yes.
So, uh, so anyway, I'd like to flag the, uh, the twelve fifty for other housing types. On the, uh, twelve fifty for townhouses, uh, it's not a flag as much as I just think it's incredibly important for us as a council to understand, uh, the math and the, uh, whole density, uh, issue in general. Uh, and to understand the choices between, um, not expressly addressing, uh, townhouse density and, and, uh, or doing it as you're suggesting, Mercy, and also, uh, the choice between the, uh, model code or the, uh, ORA. So, so that's that's less of a flag for potential areas of controversy and more of a flag for just being real careful that we understand what we're talking about, uh, on that one. And that's it for me.
So when we're talking about cottages, then I lost the, the term of narrow houses in all of this. Are we not talking about narrow houses any longer?
I took that language out to, because it's really not by itself a, a housing type, it's just a small house. And it also seemed, um, to cause a bit of controversy, because there were a number of planning commissioners who said they did not like the skinny house.
Okay, thank you.
Well, whether we call it that or something else, it still can be created with this. So that seems a little interesting, so. Um, could we confirm? 'Cause I'm looking at time, it's, uh, it's twenty past. So Leila, can you just give us a listing so far of, of areas that we're gonna come back to ea- on this? Either because of community input, we've heard so far, uh, questions we might have, and also just the need for us to see how all this fits together, um, as a group, or if we take something out, what effect does it have? So what do we have so far?
So the, the issues that we flagged are the minimum, um, I was, I remember here, the maximum square footage on the first dwelling unit, so the three thousand square feet.
Uh huh.
The one thousand two hundred and fifty square foot minimum lot size for other housing types.
Uh huh.
And then the reduction of the front yard setback from twenty feet to ten feet. And then I think I heard, um, uh, Councilor Spagman say that we want just, um, and I think the memo does this, but just some more clarity on the choices we have with respect to the minimum lot size uh, for townhomes. Um, looking at the differences between uh, the Oregon Administrative Rule and the Model Housing Code, and then what we've recommended.
Okay, I'm gonna add the floor area ratio to that list as well. To me, that's tied to the maximum square footage, and they both get at the idea of what would be restricted and in what way.
Okay, can you describe to me a little more what you would like us to touch on as far as the floor area ratio component goes?
I'd like to understand how much different that is from what we allow today. I'd like to understand how much of a restriction that would actually place on people who are building. And I know my questions are not gonna be like, simple, here's the diagram, how to answer it, but the, I think it's easier to get your head around the question, not whether you're for it against it, but it's easier to get around the question of what the impact is of setting a maximum on the square, number of square feet you can have for a dwelling.
Uh huh.
But I, I'm not there yet in really understanding what the, what houses would look like with an FAR in place that's been suggested and how different that would be from what is allowed today.
Okay, that's great.
I know I'm not alone on that, but I'm just gonna go out there and be bold about what I don't, I don't get yet, so.
No, that's great.
Is that, is that enough to give you? Okay, 'cause I know some of this, the challenge for me in this is some of it, I have a hard time articulating my question. I just know there's something there that I don't get yet, so be patient with me and we'll, we'll work through it.
All the patience in the world. That's really helpful, thank you. Okay, um, and the other thing I'll just note is the, the full map of all the zone districts with the proposed consolidation, and then a definition of middle housing. So that's, that's what I've heard so far. Did I miss anything, or does? All right?
I have more.
Well, then spoon it out.
Okay, um, so, uh, Leila, you and I talked before about some of these definitions that, um,
Oh, yeah.
I either think ought to be included or, um, um, or I don't understand. So one of the terms then that I see used is infill housing.
Uh huh.
Um, and I don't see that that's been defined. And during the Planning Commission, I heard discussion about the potential for somebody to buy a, buy a house, drop the house, and put up a quad where, uh, a single unit existed before. And I think that strikes a lot of fear in current residents. Um, so, um, ultimately, I'd like to have a definition of infill housing. Um, and, and again, like Catherine's talking about, I'd like to get a, um, idea about what the impact of it is. As I'm looking at this list, I'm also realizing that there is a definition of middle housing in ninety-five point five, dash five. So maybe it just resides there more naturally. Um, and then there's a couple of other terms that were used that, um, I see, like, I, I looked at, uh, the diagram and I saw what is referred to as a flag lot, um, but it's never defined. Um, and there's also a term, um, for parking pocket. And I don't know whether, that seems, I don't see a diagram, but I did see a reference to a, a parking pocket itself. And then going back to, um, the, uh, definition of middle housing and the confusion that I'm hearing in the community about, uh, differentiating that from the Manzanita Pines planned unit development. Um, I don't know that I see anything definitionally that would differentiate one from the other. Um, so, um, I think that that would be helpful. Um, you know, it's like taking the budget around town and saying, look, and if you just look, here, here's your explanation. Um, and so, uh, you already fixed my concerns about whether it's a principal street as opposed to an arterial. Um, and then, um, uh, again, still in ninety-five-five, uh, when, under the Article Two for lots and parcels, um, E is lot slash parcel sidelines, uh, and G is lot averaging. And then there's residential through lots. And I'm curious to know whether parcel and lot are inter, used interchangeably.
They are used interchangeably, and I think that clarification is in a definition in ninety-five-four.
Okay.
Well, okay.
I'm gonna do a time check. We've got five minutes till half past. So where are we, um, Leila, in terms of the whole content of what we would cover if we stayed here till we were older?
We're a little more than halfway, but this is the meatier part of it. So I think the next section should go a little quicker.
Okay, well, we're gonna stop in five minutes, and then we're gonna turn our eyes to planning, so.
Okay. Um, okay. Um, so this is a pretty straightforward change that, uh, we just have to list and permit required housing types. Um, these all have to be allowed in mixed use in the commercial zones.
Is there essentially anything different of what's allowed in the commercial zone based on this?
Yeah, I mean, the commercial zone allows, you know, mixed-use buildings, but the standards related to updated standards related to duplex, quads, triplexes, cottage clusters, et cetera, would just need to be applied in the commercial zones.
Okay, so all of those are allowed in the commercial zone and would be subject to the same definitions, requirements as they are in the residential zones?
Yeah, anywhere residential housing is allowed has to
Okay.
be amended. Uh, the off-street parking requirements, so everything that's in the proposed amendments are reflective of the have-to-dos. The only want-to-do that we're recommending is eliminating the parking requirement for dwellings under five hundred square feet and accessory dwelling units. Um, I'll just speak from a little experience that particularly as it relates to ADUs, which tend to be a really good source for rental housing on existing developed lots. Um, this elimination of on-street parking or off-street parking really helps facilitate their development. Um, and so I just wanna say that as far as an ADU goes. So if you think of an existing lot that's already developed out, that has a garage, that somebody wants to convert into an ADU, if you require off-street parking, it can oftentimes never materialize because of the way that the lot is already developed. Um, so I've seen in these two cities I've worked in that when this is eliminated, those types of housing become a pretty simple, um, changes and, uh, result in, in new housing that is typically renter, long-term renter. And I think, I know you all know this, but it's helpful to just reiterate that the short-term rental standards require two off-street parking spaces. And so it would be, you know, naturally, none of these could be, um, put into the, uh, become a, a short-term rental. Jerry?
Just trying to zero in on, uh, ADUs versus, uh, other small dwellings for the purpose of this, uh, potential change. So ADUs, uh, I suppose could be five hundred square feet, uh, probably could be less. Uh, what, what are what are we thinking about when we talk about dwellings under five square feet, five hundred square feet that are not ADUs? But those just really small little cabins or?
Any of the middle housing types frankly could could be this. So duplexes, triplexes, quads, even cottage clusters. So you, yeah, you can look at it separately.
You wouldn't have the same argument for exempting them they do for ADUs. ADUs makes perfect sense if you already have somebody with a lot.
Yeah, that's right, yes, and it's a very
All right.
due observation, yes. So I is this something that we should flag for further discussion?
Uh,
If I'm comfortable with that?
No, I mean, public comment already, so no, it needs, I think it needs to be flagged. I was hoping someone else would do it besides me.
Well, I'm, I'm flag, I'm flagging half of it.
Uh, hey. I'll agree with you, Catherine, if that helps.
And you know, it, this isn't, it's just, it's in the spirit of trying to understand it better and have the community conversation. That's the, 'cause we're gonna get a lot of feedback. We're gonna get a lot of feedback on what's required of us, and we know we have to do that, and this is in addition. So it's, it's just part of the co- community discussion.
Yep, okay, great. Okay, um, these are off-street parking, um, requirements. So these are the standards related to how a site is parked. Uh, we are required to allow multiple, um, lots to share driveways. Um, some of the design-related recommendations that came out of this include limiting driveway widths to no more than twelve, uh, ten feet. I think it's twelve right now. Is that right? I think it's twelve. And that we permit driveways to be located three feet from the side property line. I think it's currently five, and this allows Oregon access to the rear side of the lot, which you'll see some diagrams of. Um, allowing parking pockets, so this gets at Tom's good suggestion to include a definition of what that is. But that would be allowing parallel parking, um, on the front property line, so behind, uh, the, the right-of-way. And some of the parking standards, uh, listed in Section four point one oh, uh, six oh, middle housing supplemental provisions. But those are the key, um, changes. Tom?
Thank you. The driveway setback of three feet, I remember in one of the commission discussions, there was a lot of encouraging talk about shared driveways, uh, sitting or side-by-side driveways, uh, did that, uh, fall by the wayside?
No, that's, that's built in, that's, um, allowing multiple lots to share driveways. So there's a standard for a shared driveway. If it's right on the property line, it only has to be fifteen feet wide.
So, you know, over time, but, so does that presume then two two property owners next door to each other decide they're going to do that, and they're both building, and they just build that in to begin with? I can see that. What I don't understand is how or if that would affect. I, I don't, I just don't get this one from a practical perspective. Does this mean houses would, current houses would change their driveway situation to allow for?
It's more likely, excuse me, it's more likely in a new development. Say if somebody has two side-by-side lots, or they have a larger lot that they've subdivided into smaller lots.
Would this also be known as a flag lot? You see some where there's a house in front, and further back on the lot, there's a house in the back, and they have one driveway in, and then turn off to separate parking spaces?
Uh, this would apply to a flag lot's driveway, but it's not quite the same. Right now, we're just dealing with houses that are sitting facing the street side by side. The, the flag lot discussion is really part of ninety-five-five.
Well, I agree, we lumped this into the flag from the last parking points on the previous slide to talk about more.
The want-to-do's bit? 'Cause the shared driveways are a requirement? So are there, I didn't see other three bullets that we want to flag and discuss?
Yes, please.
Okay. Uh,
So do you all wanna keep going? And still then have time for discussion about next steps? I, I need, I don't know how much more we have to go, so I've gotta, I got, need to get a sense of that.
Not about it. I think two more slides that are specific to the requirements, and then there's the map, the the Jell-O molds, which we can table until next time, and then it's the schedule, so. I think we're pretty close. Let me just flick through here and share. Yeah, this is the last one. And then it gets into the visuals. Am I right, Mercy? I'm not missing anything else, yeah?
Okay, Council, are you okay with proceeding, knowing we're gonna spend at least a half an hour probably on next steps? Okay, let's keep going then.
Okay, so this is it, um, so the last have-to-do is incorporating clear and objective standards. So, uh, for cottage clusters and townhomes and the location of main entrances. So one of the things that this proposed code does is it does provide, there's there's some subjective standards in our existing code. there's some subjective standards in our existing code, and so part of what we're required to do is make everything very clear and objective, and so that's, that's one element of this. Um, some of the things that I talked about when I sort of talked about sort of the hatchet versus the paring knife essentially is that we have man-to-mid a kind of specific minimum levels of design that are required on every dwelling unit, and the Planning Commission spent a lot of time uh, talking through this. So facet, facade articulation, so that's kind of how a building, um, I was gonna say sort of bends and moves, but it's just sort of what that building frontage looks like. Um, the garage being set back from the street, ensuring there's like facade transparency or windows that are facing the street. Um, landscaping, particularly in clustered parking areas, and then pedestrian access and accessibility. Um. And the idea here really is to promote a human-scale pedestrian-oriented design, um, but while allowing kind of a broad range of architectural styles.
Does that relate to pedestrians moving up and down the street or on the property?
I, you know, I think it applies to both, and so I think the garage is a good example. Uh, we refer to them as snout houses where the, the garage is right in front and the building is set far back from the street. And as a pedestrian um, walking down the street, there's a greater level of safety in your experience if you're passing by windows and you have, you know, it's more, um, especially in, in cities, and we are a city, it's a small city. Um, but that's one example, but yes, those standards also apply to um, like cottage clusters where you might have um, even fourplexes where you might have uh, multiple parking spaces located next to each other. It ensures that there's uh, some design standards around that so that it maintains um, landscaping and beauty that um wouldn't otherwise be there. Uh, Brad, sorry.
Um, I think this is a bit more of a general question, but I started thinking about um, design standards being put in place and again, some of the other things we're talking about. Um. Have we discussed or considered impact to staff and permitting folks? Is this gonna be a big impact, take more time? Something to discuss later?
You know, thank you for asking and for caring. Um, it's gonna be a shift for us, yeah, for sure. Especially having to learn the model code and then move to this code. That's not a small thing for us. However, in times our skills build and we become more comfortable and confident with the code, that, it does get easier. Um, but yeah, it will, it will affect our plan review time for sure. Um, most of the staff have been deeply involved in the development of these standards, so we're, we're probably more comfortable with this than we are with the, the, the model code frankly. Um, but yeah, it'll just be a shift. It'll take us some time, plan review will take a little longer, we're, we're most likely going to have to lean on our uh, consultants to help us at the initial phases, um, particularly as we're in between codes. Um, but I think at the end of the day, it's uh, it's worth it.
So just a bit of a ramp-up in learning curve and then everybody's ready, you're good to go, yeah.
These things aren't promoting more housing. These things are promoting how housing looks, correct?
Yeah, and it's, it's one of the reasons why it was important to me and you supported this and I thank you for that, but that we added the planning and permit tech, because we're gonna need it.
Yeah, I just, I, I think this, this needs community discussion as well. We, it's just, you know, that's a big change for people. Um. And I I I want to hear from people directly about this because it's one thing to have opinions about what you think a nice house looks like. And I have them too, we all do as individuals, but it's another to um, limit what people can do based on their budgets in some cases and what they're trying to build, so.
Well, and I will, I will say that we did put a lot of thought into that, like affordability is the driver in all of this. So there was some discussion about limiting material palettes in that I think the Planning Commission very clearly um, put off to a later day, uh, just didn't feel that was appropriate. I think, and I'll just quickly show this, but these are the, Marcy's Jell-O molds that kind of show you the building envelope. You know, and many, if, even though they don't, like this is the space in which someone can build something. Uh, but I would say that the standards are in a way that are not, that I don't think will be severely limiting or even limiting necessarily. I think again, we designed this regulatory framework to be flexible and adaptable and allow for a range of different types of um, of uh, architectural styles, and we were really lucky to have two, um, well, and you include Marcy in this, three uh, really talented architects provide a lot of infrom, feedback on that, and so um, certainly defer to you if you want to talk to the members of the community about this, but staff did put a whole lot of work and thought into ensuring that the standards that we're putting forward are not onerous, not overly prescriptive, um, to allow for that range of um, that range of design. I think it's important.
Yeah, and I completely accept what you say is true, I, and I just think we're talking about the difference now of architects discussing and having a clear visual of what it means and people in the community who won't have that view, so I just, it needs more time to
Sure.
flesh out with people. And am I alone in that, Council? Is, is, am I an outlier on that one? I'd like to know if I am. That's good to know.
Well, I would, personally, I don't have the same level of concern as you, but I agree with you that the community uh, red large is likely to have uh, some interest in this, so. You know, it's like, it's like the, the 3,000-foot thing, I mean, I think, I don't know what I would do with a house 3,000 square feet, I couldn't afford one anyway. But uh, I think it's gonna be a big deal if we impose that limitation. So I think, you know, it doesn't matter what our personal opinion is necessarily, it's that I think we're in a good position to sense uh, what things are gonna be hot-button issues with the community and, and what things we could probably uh, spend less time on, and I think you're probably right on this one, Catherine.
Okay, I want to shout out some encouragement of all the people, because you've been on this train a long time now, months and months and months, so Council is working through and thinking about the, I don't know, 1,500 people, a couple thousand people who potentially are impacted by this and will have questions whether we hear about them formally or not, so that's the challenge. I know you're used to that, we've this is not a new thing. But I also don't, i- it's not a matter of just flagging every single thing, the additional things, it's just that's how it turns out, because that's, that's a lot for people to take in, and we want whatever we end up agreeing on, you know, and getting consensus to, and then passing ideally, that will be well-received by the community and seen as a positive, and they'll understand why it's positive as opposed to another kind of reaction, so that's what we're aiming for. Okay, proposed schedule? Let's talk about that.
Yep. So this is what we had put before you before, so we did, Planning Commission did take public comment, hold a public hearing, and they have made a recommendation to you. You have now today reviewed the adoption-ready ordinance. We have some flagged items, so my presumption is, is that we are going to need another work session. Um, so I would defer to you, I think we had put in two options here, um, obviously those options are up to you if there's a third, uh, that you would have put in another work session in July uh, on these issues, and then have a first reading in August. And so with that, I'll stop sharing so you can talk to each other and uh, direct us on what you want to do next.
So I'd like to hear from Council members, your thoughts?
I indeed uh, agree to have another workshop in July and then look at potentially a first reading in August if we've resolved all the questions at the July uh, work session.
I want to stay on track for an August adoption, so uh, definitely next week, and if we need to do another one in between that and the August meeting, um, I'll find the time.
Well, just to Tom's point, I'm fine to do a improvised work session instead of a schedule, and if we want to do it sooner.
Jerry?
Well, I think, um, I mean, I'm okay trying to accelerate the process as long as we you know, have enough work session time to answer all the flagged issues. But I think ideally, um, we would figure out a way to uh, at least invite the public to uh, get in on the conversation before we say to them you need to testify at a public hearing and you've got three minutes, because I think uh, you know, a lot of people just don't want to do that. Um, and we can't change human nature. If you tell them they have to testify at a public hearing and they got three minutes, uh, we, we may not hear from them. If we invited them to a work session uh, and let, uh, set aside a small amount of time uh, at the work session to hear from them, that might be uh, more legitimate uh, community input. Or if we just go it, you know, if we just power through with however many work sessions we need and pay more attention to what people are telling us at the post office, I guess that's another way to get public input, but I don't think we should just rely on the very formalistic uh, ritualistic public hearing that we know we're gonna have at some council meeting at some point to really bring us uh, views in the community on this.
I agree with Jerry, and I'm curious to know, given the, the list of flagged items and the different technical things that I brought up, how much time do, does Marcy and Leila need to bring us the modifications that we talked about?
I can jump in real quick about that. Um, I think the modifications that are clear are fairly straightforward, right? They're mostly definitions that you've asked for. What isn't so clear to me, and I could use a little more direction on, are what exactly are your questions for us? You've identified issues. And what I've heard throughout this meeting is that these are issues you want to get more information from the community on. What I haven't heard is other than a couple of instances, more specifics about information you need from staff, so it would be helpful for staff to be better prepared to understand exactly what it is that you need from us.
One of my concerns is um, this uh, permitted uses in infill lots. Um, because I, I, I really do think there's a lot of public concern about um, uh, multiple buildings going up right next door to existing uh, residences in the neighborhood.
Yeah, I can probably address that for you right now, which is that these will apply to everywhere. So it'll be um, a force that we as a city don't control. Um, it's market forces that determine whether or not those kinds of changes happen, so that's kind of in the have-to-do side of the equation. Uh.
I think we're actually getting into a topic that needs more discussion, Leila, rather than a shorter answer right now.
Okay.
Do you mind? Because I, I, I think the concern's there, that, the thing you're raising, um, I mean, it's an excellent question, and this is just, this is what I was trying to say earlier. It's not like I can say give me a drawing that shows X. I'm trying to understand this change is gonna, you know, well, let's take, I don't know what, I can't think of a good example, but one of the changes that's optional for us. I, I'm not, I need help. I'm not there yet to be able to say, oh, I can picture what that is going to mean to the community in the short term and in the longer term. And I can see the connection of how that will promote middle housing in our community. And then I'm comfortable and confident with supporting that. And I know it's difficult because it's not like the typical practical, straightforward questions I'm asking in, in our meetings normally. This is a different, it's a different kind of work, and I you know, I feel like I'm missing something that I'm not able to do that already, but I'm just, I'm just not there yet, and I'm, I'm not there yet in terms of being able to meet somebody at the post office and go through all of these things and confidently explain what they're going to mean and what my opinion is about them, whether that's pro or or not, or against, and that, um, so I'm, I'm just, I'm not as sure as I usually am about what I need from staff, and that, I'm, I'm having a little bit of a hard time with that. I know that doesn't give you any help, except to think what the heck, and I do now. I've, I've already done all these things. What can I do now, you know, now that we're at this point, so.
Yeah. Well, I mean, Marcy has done a lot of really nice diagrams that sort of illustrate some of these things that we didn't touch on today, um, due to time. But that'll be posted on the website. You've seen them before. I would say um, spend some time looking at those, because those are good illustrations of the what could happen based on, um, and there are just some examples of what could happen using the, the proposed um, language that we already have in the ordinance, so that might be a good starting point. Let's just kind of go back to that. I know you've seen them, but maybe go back to it now with this conversation in mind, and um, we can certainly um, collect the ones that she has put together, which are many, and have those available for folks to spend some time looking at, because you could dice and slice this thing a million different ways, and what I think Marcy did a good job doing was providing some good, solid examples of the range of things that could occur. But I hear you. It takes time. This is, you know.
Yeah.
It's complicated stuff.
As we go back and talk about schedule, I'm, I want to support, and actually, I'm very, feel very strongly about having a non-hearing sort of setting with the community, so I'd like to before, and I probably just cut Jerry off, I'm sorry, well, I'd like to go back to that calendar, see how our workshop time could fit in, and then what that, the timing would look like for a community um, session. We had Jerry?
Well, I was just gonna, to answer Leila's uh, request that we be more specific, you're right, we have flagged a lot of issues without really saying what specifically we need, but I think one of the things we need is for an opportunity for the Council as a group uh, on a flagged topic to have a conversation among the five of us. We haven't, we haven't had that. Uh, there was definitely some back and forth among um, Planning Commission members on various issues, including Planning Commission members who voted the same way on the ultimate question. They went back and forth. We need to have that back and forth, uh, certainly on all the flagged uh, issues. One specific flag that I raised, and I actually said it was more it was, it was less about uh, opinions and more about need for more information. But I will tell you, Leila, because I do think it's important, and that's where um, it's where Marcy said that uh, uh, we don't have to have a uh, townhouse maximum density at all. Uh, but she recommends that we uh, not elect that approach. I would, I would like to understand fully why that approach is, is not uh, a good idea uh, from, from Marcy's perspective, so that, that's one thing that I can tell you specifically, but. The other thing, the, the rest of it for me, I mean, I, I was happy that for the most part, all of the flags represented at least two or three, and in most cases, all four of us. Um, it just indicates that we, we need a chance to air it out a little bit, and if we can air it out in front of a bigger crowd of the public who can then chip in themselves, I think that'd be the ideal scenario.
Well, that's great. That's helpful, um, and that was kind of my gut instinct, but I, I wanted you to say it yourselves. But if there is additional
Thank you.
You're welcome. But if there is additional stuff that comes up, you know, please email me, not, not the rest of y'all, and let me know so that we can, it's helpful for us so that we can prepare for that, um, much as the frequently asked questions that we put together, uh. So we can do that. So, so what are you all thinking? I mean, what I heard was we're gonna try to aim for a first reading of the ordinance in August. I would say and obviously that's flexible, you guys can tell us differently. Staff probably needs, uh, we have to post it a week ahead of time because it's an ordinance. So we'd need a little bit of time in between your last kind of set of directions, so if you have us make amendments, we'll need some time to make those amendments. Um. What, what's on your mind? Are Our next work session would be July 16th. Because the first Monday is not until the 7th, so your first city council meeting is not till the 9th. So that leaves, and if you want me there, that leaves next week. And I'm out after that and back on the 7th. If you don't want me there, that's fine too.
No, no, we need you there. So I lost a little track on the dates at the end. So, so, so no, we're going to strike the July 9 city council public hearing tentative first review. We're not going to do that, correct?
Correct.
July 16 work session stays as is. What, what would the timing, I'm just thinking about our, you know, the other small thing we have going on in August with opening the city hall.
Right. And we're moving.
Is, is, is there a way potentially to have a community session there before we move to our first reading so that we really have had the, the community discussion and do our best to get as many people there as possible? Is that, is that, can we make that happen?
I, my answer is I don't, I don't know, because my guess is that if you do an in-person meeting, if the five of you are there, we have to allow for a call in. But in this case, if you want it to be accessible, it needs to be Zoom. I can't guarantee that we'll be, I can't guarantee when we'll be ready to go in council chambers. It's one of the things that's contributing to the August opening. So I, I'm uncomfortable with committing to that, but it isn't to say that we can't rent the Pine Grove if we need to. We can do some outreach and see what that looks like. So I think for a certain thing, I think that would probably be a better move. Costs a little money, but I think it's a worthwhile thing to do, so.
What do other councillors think about that?
Well, we, we are, we are going to have a council meeting on first Wednesday in August, right? At the new city.
Yeah, in August, anytime after the 4th, I can, yes.
Well, I mean.
Before that, I can't.
One, so, couple of things. We used to have work sessions the afternoon of a council meeting. We are having a work session today, 48 hours after a really impactful planning commission meeting. So to me, theoretically, we could have a work session on Monday or Tuesday, the first week of August, with the council meeting on Wednesday. And the new building itself would generate interest and a crowd. I don't think there's any reason why we couldn't flip the script and have our work session before the council meeting versus after, or we could use the after the council work session for other matters. So I guess I'd like to explore the possibility of two work sessions. One would be a little bit more nerdy and a little bit more in the weeds with the, with the regular approach. And the second one would be where we invite public participation of some kind. And the second one could occur, I think, either the Monday or Tuesday prior to the first Wednesday of August. And that way we'd be in the big room, we'd have the, you know, we'd have a bigger crowd for a couple of reasons. And I think we could just, you know, we could hopefully generate some interest in the community to pay attention to whatever we do in July work session wise, that would further drive attention to what we're going to do in August, work session slash council meeting wise. We can, you know, that puts us on track potentially for first reading in August with two work sessions between now and then, in addition to what we were just wrapping up today.
So, I mean, I'm comfortable if you want to take that approach. And whatever you guys want to do is fine, but I will say that if you anticipate any amendments as a result of the community engagement, there's no way we can be ready for the 6th in that timeframe. You would be set up for September first reading if you did that, which is fine. I think getting us around a date certain, as certain as we can be, would be great. So if that's the tack that you want to take, that's, staff would need time to take your feedback and then incorporate any changes into the ordinance amendments and be able to prepare a final adoption ready version based on your input and feedback.
Yeah, I like that better because we are looking to see if we need to change our minds. We are looking to see if we've missed something from the community. So.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not uncomfortable, I mean, sooner is usually better, but I'm not uncomfortable with moving that out into September to allow us the time at a good pace to have another workshop, which I think we're saying is still July 9.
16.
Have a community session of some kind, whatever we end up calling it, prior to our council meeting on the 6th.
Yeah.
What is the turnaround time with Miller Nash?
These, it depends. I mean, they've already reviewed this package. And then we've made some amendments with, from DLCD. So unless there's hugely substantive, I, I think that that could be pretty quick, but I would say you give it at least a week. But Marcy also will have to make those changes to the ordinance language, make sure all across everything's sorted. So, I mean, I think staff, between legal review and Marcy's time, two to three weeks is, is probably a realistic estimate, just balancing that with other work and the other folks that need to, to look at this. So if you want to do it not in city hall, you could hold the public session perhaps the week of the 21st of July. I still think that we wouldn't have enough time to meet the August 6th timeline. But we need to have everything buttoned up for a September date by August 27th. And so that to me would mean that we need to have that public meeting and clear direction from council the week of August 4th, frankly. So you'd have the public meeting, but we would need your direction on what, if anything, to change between then and when you are ready to read the ordinance.
Okay, then, so what does council think about a public meeting the week of July 21? Is that generally acceptable before we start to talk about specific dates? I don't know what people's calendars are.
Yes.
That's acceptable, but I, how much does that gain us, Leila? Didn't you just say that?
It gains us some time, which we'd appreciate.
You just said.
Two weeks roughly.
But if, if we had a public session the week of July 21st, and it persuaded us to consider changes to the proposed amendments, is that enough time for a, a first reading at the August meeting?
No.
No.
Right, so if that's the case anyway, I would say, let's, we're already going to have one work session in July. I would say let's have a, a second work session with the public invited on August 4th. I don't mind moving it up to the Pine Grove on July 21st, but it doesn't sound like it gains us anything.
It gains us something because that gives us two weeks more. And so I think you need to have them, so just going to throw this out there, you need to meet with the community and then you all need to talk and direct staff what to do. So those two things need to happen pretty closely together. So if you do a meeting with the public the last, the second to last or the last week of July, you could meet in August on the 4th. Or we could put it on the agenda as a discussion item for the business meeting on the 6th. And then now we give staff adequate time, and I'm kind of looking at Marcy to see if that's true. I mean, that's cutting it pretty close for us too, because if we get direction from you on the 6th, essentially Marcy needs to have those amendments in place within a couple of days for us to then ship it off to get feedback from Miller Nash and assuming that, you know, it just starts to create.
Okay.
It bumps us up against the wire.
All right, so I don't think we're. I, I think that we will come out of our work session on July 16th. That's already scheduled, right? July 16th work session?
Yes, yes, yes.
We'll come out of that, I, I would think we would come out of that work session with a much better understanding of how council feels about all of the flagged issues. It is, we're not, we're not punting these tough decisions to the public. We just want an opportunity to share them with the public. And, and if the public turns the battleship around at the last minute, okay, well, we'll deal with that. But I do think that we're not going to that public session, you know, and throwing the whole thing at the public and saying, you guys, you guys call the shots. I mean, we are going to, I think we, we've winnowed down today what we're really concerned about. And on July 16th, I think we'll likely reach consensus on, on most of those issues. And they may all end up being what has been approved by the planning commission. So I'm, I'm, I guess I'm not too worried about if, if we had a second work session that included the public closer to the council meeting in August. I don't think that's, well, I mean, we're trying to, we're trying to hammer something out on the fly here and it's, it's getting confusing and it's, I should shut up. Really, in the end, I'm going to do what the city manager and the mayor tells me to do, so.
Well, but the worst case, the worst case scenario in that, I hate that, why did I use that phrase? The thing that could happen, the thing that could happen is if we have a public session and there's a fair amount of change, which then requires staff time and consultant time to deal with, right? So if we've, if we get to that point and find that that's true, the, the thing that happens is that you move out a month. It's not the world. And by means, the thing we're all trying to avoid is just not having this string out to, you know, Merry Christmas, here's your, here's the new code, we don't want that. So if we. I'm most concerned that we follow a path and a timing that allows people to think and doesn't feel rushed and that the public has a chance to express themselves in a way that doesn't feel rushed or forced and for them to know that their voices are heard in a setting that's more comfortable to them than the hearing, which we discussed earlier, and that we really do then have time to do something with it. So, so if we, if we have our workshop, excuse me, there, I guess there's another variable. We could also use some time if we chose to use the council meeting on the 9th for some of this. We could ask for public comment on some of that too, in such a way that we could have people say what they think. Then we've got the workshop, maybe that's not a great idea, I am thinking out loud here. And then the 16th, we have our workshop. The goal with that would be to get at the substantive areas that we need to spend some more time on and come out of that, each of us, with a clearer sense of where we're leaning in terms of how we would vote on this. And we'll see how close or far away we are from a consensus on that. Then if we give some space and put a, put a meeting together just prior to council, the 4th or the 5th. We'll see how close we are. And then either way, the soonest we would do a, a public reading, the first formal meeting would be September, and it could be October if we find that there's more work to do based on the additional community feedback. Okay, somebody tell me if it made sense.
Makes perfect sense.
Fourth or fifth would be community input.
Yeah.
That makes sense to me.
I would just say, it'll be back to back, but I would suggest we try and do it on the 5th. We've got the opening on the 2nd. There's a lot going on that weekend. I just, I think another day to breathe a little bit after all that would be good. And then we'll just go into council, but I would not recommend we do it on the same day as council meeting. I think separating it would be best.
Right.
And I think we can tee it up for the public so that they'll understand, you know, exactly how much daylight there is, if any, between the council and the planning commission. If there's no daylight, then they'll, they'll be able to understand, hopefully, what's on the table, what we're about to vote on. You know, and if the alternative is, like, planning commission approved or state law that's already in effect at that point, there's, you know, it's not like it's an open-ended discussion. It's a, it's a, it's a choice to be made and they'll know where two of their volunteer governing bodies stand at that point. So I think it's, it calls the question for the public to weigh in on at that point.
Okay. We'll assume consent from Linda.
And Marcy, are you able to attend, not to put you on the spot, the 16th work session in case any technical questions come up that I can't answer? I can do it if not. Or you're muted?
Yes, I, I can if I, if my jury duty, which it starts on the 7th, is not extended into that next week.
Well, good luck with your civic duty, but.
We might be, it might actually be more fun than jury duty, which is hard to. I'm sure you've not been at much.
I'm sure she's going to be diplomatic in her facial expression on that one. Okay, so.
Sounds like a good plan.
Yeah, and I have one other question. So is there one place that a citizen can go to see all of the public comment that's been submitted so far on this, either to planning commission and/or letters that have come into council separately?
Yes, yeah, it's all posted under the planning commission's June 9th meeting.
Okay, and as people, as people continue to write in then, and I expect we are going to get some more in between meetings, where will that go? And how will council be able to see that as well?
So we don't have a hearing date officially set, so anything that is mailed into, I would say send it to city hall. And, or you can send it to the city council email because all five of you see that as well. But we, we won't be taking public comment until a hearing is set and then we'll let, then we would want folks to send it to city hall so that it can be included as part of the record. We'll, we'll endeavor to include all of that information for the hearing, but it becomes kind of squirrely if we don't have a hearing date and we get feedback and there's not a clear path to where that goes. So I'd like to stay pretty rigid about that. But in the meantime, you know, if they send an email to, to me, or if it comes into planning or it comes into city hall, we'll make sure that that is sent out to the full council.
Great, okay.
But it won't be included in the record until we have a, a hearing date set and then officially are taking in public comment.
Great, thank you.
So the council got an email this week, for example, we will be responding to that, but that would not be in the public record?
No, yeah, not until we, once we know when we have a hearing date, then we would have a more formal way of collecting that information.
Okay.
And I don't see a need to include the planning commission on those at this point.
No, the planning, the planning commission's made their decision.
Yeah, yep.
And so I think it's, it's in your court.
Okay, do we have any other, any other questions from council?
Do we want to set a time for the 5th? Or are you going to come back to us on that, Leila?
Um, why don't you, maybe Catherine and I can talk about that, what makes sense, and then we can set a time. Fortunately, we don't have to check with anyone because it's our space. I'm getting used to all this convenience. I'm not sure what I'm going to do.
I would think later afternoon, it's just more accessible time for people, but.
That's my thinking too, so.
Not everybody wants to get up and talk at 7:00 AM, so we'll move it out a little bit. That's.
We want to get working folks the opportunity to come in too, so.
Yeah, okay. All right, so thank yous are in order. It's another step down the path. There are a lot of steps on the path. I'm not speaking out of school on that one, but a lot of work from a lot of people to get us to where we are right now. So we will just keep moving and there is an end in sight to this. And we will reach the point where we make a confident vote and the public understands why, and they're better informed than they are now about what's been on the table. So, and I think we all agree on those goals, so.
Hundred percent.
All right, so thank you. All right, so thank you. Thanks very much to everyone and see you next time, okay?
Right, thank you.
See you. Thanks, everyone.